Okay. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the September 23rd Board of Education Monthly Business Meeting here at Cornwall Elementary School. Call to order here for the regular business meeting. Apologize that we ran over there a little bit in our executive session. I would ask everyone to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
All right. Thank you, everybody. We have a presentation from EFPR, who is our external auditor. They've completed the 2324 audit report, and they're getting set up now. Great, thank you. So we have with us Doug Zimmerman, engagement partner from EFPR.
Hello? Good afternoon, everyone. I'm a partner with EFPR Group, and as was mentioned, I'm going to be reviewing the results of the audit for the school district for the year ended June 30th of 2024. We did have the opportunity last week to meet with the audit committee to go through the report in detail, certainly answer any questions they have, and my plan today is just kind of hit a couple of the highlights, but certainly if anyone does have any questions, be happy to answer those for you. We begin with an audit approach for performing what we call the detailed risk assessment of the district's financial reporting system. We identify significant audit areas and obtain a detailed understanding of the internal controls that are utilized in those areas. And then we affect, we test the effectiveness of controls, and then based on the results of those tests, audit programs are designed for certain areas of the district to allow us to issue our opinion on the financial statements. We're going to be issuing three... Sorry. I could talk loud without this, but we're going to be issuing opinions on three separate financial statements. There's the overall basic financial statements. There's what's called a federal grant compliance audit, or what is thought of as a single audit. Any organization that receives over $750,000 of federal dollars either directly from the federal government or passed through New York State, and this year you received $2.2 million, so we conducted the audit in accordance with that. And then we also do an audit of the extra classroom activity funds. Again, we'll be issuing unmodified reports on all three of those, and that's exactly what you want to receive. There's no exceptions noted in preparation of the accounting records that deviated from general accepted accounting principles. All the records, all the information that we requested was freely provided. Harvey and his team do an outstanding job, not only in assisting us in completing the audit, but obviously throughout the year. The only way we're able to get an audit done and issue unmodified opinions if the accounting records are in very good shape, not only when we come there at the end of the fiscal year, but throughout the entire year. The results of our tests disclosed no instances of noncompliance or other matters that are required to be reported under government auditing standards. So that's a whole nother set of rules and regulations that you have to follow, and we perform the audit under those. And so we look at not only internal control, but compliance with laws and regulations. And again, that's also a clean bill of health. There were no material weaknesses, significant deficiencies, or noncompliance findings related to internal controls over financial reporting. So that gives you the assurance that everything you're seeing throughout the year is accurate and being recorded appropriately in the accounting records. No material weaknesses, significant deficiencies, or noncompliance findings related to the major federal program under uniform guidance, which is a single audit requirement. So again, we test based on what the federal government says that you have to do in the expenditure of those dollars, and everything that you had to do comply with the federal regulations was there and was appropriate. And this year, you can see the programs that we tested. It was the special education program that you might do. Now, you receive that money from New York State, but it is federally sourced dollars. And again, that's why it is subject to the single audit requirements. Again, that was a very high-level overview of the audit we conducted. And as I mentioned, we certainly did go through it in a lot of detail with the audit committee, but I'd be happy to answer any questions anyone has.
Thank you, Doug, for that. Maybe, Christian, if you just want to make any comments as chair of the audit committee, and then we'll open it to questions if anybody has.
I think I'll just, there were certain questions that were asked in the audit committee just so that other members of the board and the community know that what we, you know, asked you about, and perhaps you can explain more, give it, or repeat the explanations you gave us. There were questions about the pension, employment pension benefits and the actuarial assumptions that were changed. There were questions about the increase in transportation costs year over year, and just, you know, clarifying what was going on underneath that. And I think there were questions about some of the things in our net position due to the capital project and the bonds and that. And so those were the three areas. And I think there was a question about McKinney-Vento as well.
I'm sorry?
McKinney-Vento and just, and kind of was off the transportation discussion. So I don't know if anyone wants a further explanation on any of those areas. I think we did vote as an audit committee to recommend unanimously to the board as a whole. And, but I think if people want to ask further questions or clarifications on that, I think that would be a good use of our time.
Thank you, Christian. I open the floor to any questions from the board.
Well, since you've piqued our interest, I'll take the flyer on the transportation angle. I don't know if there's any other more context that you can give us about that, about transportation costs. I don't know, Christian, you would be in the best position to perhaps rephrase that question, so it's a little bit...
So let me give like the numbers as I remember them, and I apologize if these are not exact. I think that there was an increase in transportation cost of 38% year over year. Jim, is that, because I think you're the one who asked that question, and that seemed much larger than just a contract alone. And Harvey, you gave us some further information about how we budget for transportation and some of the things that are, we don't know until they happen type things that can make a transportation item larger or smaller than what you might think it would be. And so that's, that was the, that was what the discussion centered around.
And if I may piggyback on that, I was the one that brought up the McKinney-Vento. As I've heard from a few parents, not exclusively to Lee Road, but many from Lee Road. The McKinney-Vento issue, the homeless student issue, I don't want to speak as an expert on it by any means. I'm certainly not. My question was, I was told that last year there was a large increase in homeless students, and certainly, of course, if some, if a student is homeless, we want to make sure that we care for them. Regarding our fiscal responsibility, I asked, how do we ensure that these students are legitimately homeless and not simply anybody that doesn't belong in the district just wants to be a part of our great school system? And I was told that primarily we research it by bus drivers. Let us know if somebody is being, you know, dropped off and picked up from the bus stop or if another parent makes a complaint. I've heard from parents at this school who are particularly concerned about populations of students being dropped off by a private van or an Uber or taxis in quantity. And I don't know if that's investigated. I'm not putting anybody on the spot to tell me as we sit here. But I just, given our increase in transportation costs, I wrote down 38.8%. Somebody correct me if I'm wrong on that number. And the large increase in the McKinney-Vento population, I would ask that that is, we do our due diligence on that and make sure that these are all legitimate transportation costs.
I think, you know, the purpose of the audit is to make sure that everything is properly accounted for, not necessarily to justify the decisions about what money is spent on. You know, we decide on a budget. They're not advising us on whether we spent our money well or not. They are just saying that we provided a, is that, is that a...
That's a fair comment. Yeah, we don't get involved in the budget process.
The point is that in our discussion, it came up because it was larger than I think the people at the table expected, and there was a discussion about it, and there were some clarifications from different people on that topic.
Thank you, Christian. That's an excellent point. And if I can hop in and Doug's probably sitting there going, what are you talking about? Because we actually discussed the transportation cost. I waited until Doug got off the Zoom and asked specifically to Harvey.
Detailed discussion, yeah.
It happened after you were gone, because I said it's not really an audit question. It's just a general question. So maybe Harvey, if you want to give us a short answer on transportation increase. You know, the, a lot of it is, last year it came in, the transportation contract was up. There was, you know, fuel increases, inflation. We had talked about that a couple of years ago as that contract came up. So we were expecting an increase. It was perhaps a little bit larger than even expected.
That's correct. The contract we have with West Point Tours was up. What they have an option with us to do is they can extend it on an annual basis at CPI. This was during the high escalation of fuel, labor, and such, and they just couldn't do it. They said, we can't do it at CPI. We're going to have to go back to bid, which we did. They were the sole bidders, and the increase was substantial relative to what we've been experiencing in the past. But with that said, we kind of anticipated that happening. I don't think that they, I don't think in any form or fashion they put it to a price that was unjust. I think we've been living good in the previous rates. They really treated us well. So it's more realistic of what the market conditions are now. But with that said, part of, part of the increase is also the variables of the needs that we have in this, of our students. There's a host of different types of transportation that we do. It's not just getting the kids from home to school. We have added district special education. We have athletics. We have kids who are what we call walking wounded. If they, if they can't take their normal bus, we have to put another bus on that has a lift to get them to school, as well as we have homeless. Homeless, McKinney-Vento, that's the federal act that requires us within, any student within 50 miles of the district, we have to transport them. So realistically, we might have to transport a child from the city up here every single day. Okay, so that does, depending on where they have to go, that could, that could be quite an increase or add to the increase. So there's no single one piece. It's all of this built in. It's just unfortunate, but that's what it was.
And you were correct. It was 38.8% increase year over year, but it was only about a 6% increase over your final budget numbers. So the, you know, the budget was, as Harvey mentioned, anticipating that large increase.
Thank you, Harvey, for that answer, and Doug for that additional context. Any other audit-specific questions, Bass?
Audit, yeah, thanks, Jim. My question is about being homeless, the status of being homeless students. The first time I heard about the term homeless, I was sitting in a, in a policy committee meeting, and it came, comes in one of the policies and said, what's the definition? And the explanation I heard is that you live in the district. Your house burns down. You go rent a room in a hotel somewhere. This comes to the 50 miles radius where, okay, and you have to pick up the students back and forth. Now, what I heard earlier from Tiffany is that how can we make sure nobody abuses that status? Right? I mean, if you live in, I don't know, in, I don't know, Monroe, and you think we're better, I mean...
No, I, thank you. I understand that question. I'm just going to, I'm going to come back to that. Terry's going to hop in on that. I want to put a pin on that, just in respect for Doug's time. I believe he's traveling today. If we have any specific audit questions, I just want to get those out so we can cut him loose, and then we'll come back to that specific question. Any, any other questions for Doug? All right. Well, I'm going to take that as, as we're done there with that portion. We'll come back to your question, Bass. Thank you for coming down. Thank you for the audit. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you, everyone.
Just, I'm sure everyone saw on the agenda that we have the item on there to vote to approve the report, which is, our state deadline is what, October 15th? So we are...
Yes.
We're good and ready to go there. So thank you for your work on the audit, and thank you for presenting to us as committee last week and to us as board today.
Great. Thank you, everyone. Have a great evening.
Thank you, Doug.
Thanks, Doug.
So with that, Terry, if you want to hop in and answer Bass's question just generally about who qualifies for McKinney-Vento, please.
Yeah, I think there's a pretty good understanding of what qualifies. There's a whole host of circumstances from domestic violence to home burning down to things that ensure it's you don't have stable housing. With regards to Tiffany and Bass's question of how do we assure, impossible. That's not the answer this board wants to hear, but we face a range of issues from verifying whether families are homeless or not, at registration, verifying that you actually live in our school district, whether someone moves out of district. All these things happen all the time during the course of the year. When we do get a concern from either an administrator or a teacher, a community member, we do investigate to the greatest extent practicable, but we need something more than, I saw this and I want you to investigate. That's, it's a huge amount of resource to actually conduct the investigation that we do. It is occurring. I'm just, I'm just trying to be very, very transparent and realistic with the, with the board that to assure you is absolutely impossible with the resources that we have. Harvey and I discussed this on the way back from meeting today, that we could hire a full-time person for this, and they would still have work to do conducting these investigations full-time. So we do, we look at returned mail. We look at other pieces of information, but we, we investigate to the greatest extent practical.
Yeah, thanks for the explanation, but I think to say impossible, I don't see how that's true, for the lack of better terms. To be a resident, you either own a house or rent within, you know, the borders. If you own a house, you pay taxes. You can verify by taxes. It just sounds like utilities. If you rent an apartment, I would go to the management company of that apartment complex. Did that person sign a lease with you? Is it a weekly lease? Is it annually? I mean, there are a lot of mechanisms you can resort to in order to prove yes or no.
I'm just, I'm just...
It's not complicated.
Yep. I'm just respectfully saying that it's much more complicated than that. People sign month-to-month leases, so at what point do you go back to verify that they're still in a month-to-month status? We have families that take other people in. So if you provide residency verification saying that I now have these two individuals living with me that, that can qualify as living in the district, it gets really, really complex. There's addresses that say apartment one and apartment two, but if you were to look them up on Zillow, it's an actual house, not an apartment complex. So the rabbit hole that you can go down that we experience, week in, week in and week out, is extremely complex. You can have custodial affidavits. You can have residency affidavits. All of that constitutes ways in which you can access school districts. I'm just saying, to assure you is impossible. To say that we don't do our due diligence, we absolutely do. I'm just saying there's so many exceptions that we, we deal with. It's really complex.
Thanks.
So only because you were responding to me and to Bass, I just wanted to follow up by saying, I completely understand and agree with what you're saying. It would be impossible. You could go down so many rabbit holes. That being said, if you have parents saying there's a van or Uber van or taxi van dropping off a group of students that's not related, I don't think that that would require hiring a full-time person. And I think that, that investigating or looking into, I don't want to make it sound like it's an adversarial process, but to just look into or verify, I don't think that would require a full-time person, and I think that's something that could be followed up on without going down the rabbit holes and without spending an exorbitant amount of money.
Yeah, and if the parents have actual names, that's helpful rather than stories, because we actually have security outside to greet, especially at elementary schools. We have staff members greeting students and the kids from right line, so that's, they're not going to...
But we could see them like right at drop-off, right? So it wouldn't take a tremendous amount of resources.
Correct. But I'm just saying that they may have already been investigated, and they may have a legit reason for being dropped off.
And Terry, if I can just interject, I just want to be careful when we're having conversations as well. When someone applies for McKinney-Vento, it's a very sensitive situation, and have people taken advantage of it? I'm certain that some have. But the majority of people are literally coming and they're embarrassed to fill out the paperwork to say that they are homeless. So I don't want to confuse homeless students and families that are trying to take advantage of the system and lie about where they're living. Those are two totally separate situations. We are required, like Harvey said, within a 50-mile radius. These are children that have been our children. We've had some kids that maybe they, their home has burnt down. We had a situation like that two years ago. There was an apartment building, and there was like five apartments. Our numbers did go up, absolutely. Those kids were living in hotels throughout the local area. We are required to bus them. That is a whole different situation. And also to piggyback on what Terry was saying, there is a set process. When the flag is raised within a school, more times than not, honestly, it's the little kid saying, we don't really live here. It's true. And so it kind of triggers the timeline of what happens.
That's not who we're talking about. I don't want to make it sound like I'm being rude to any child.
That's the first, absolutely. Yep, but that's the first step. And then after that, if the parents cannot prove it, then we send the next letter. There does come a time period where if they cannot give us what we need to do, they can, they can no longer come here by law. So it's a very hard process because you are dealing in children, and we're sitting there looking at these kids, and we know, and you're in high school, your parents are telling you to lie. Like, that's terrible. And then additionally, we do send security out. We have, if we know that there's something happening, we do try to send security out to take a look and see, so people understand that if you are not living here and you are lying about it, that is against the law, and your children cannot attend the school system.
Thank you. Christine, you need a brief question? Nope. Okay. Moving on to our next item here, public comment. Do we have any comments? No comments from the public, which brings us to reports, and we're going to go to our student representatives. Welcome. Madeline Larkin and Ava Rich, thank you for joining us, your first meeting with us this year. I will tell you that the board always really enjoys the comments coming from the students. You know, we're here to provide the education for you guys, and to hear what's going on, especially in the high school where you guys are, is a great shot in the arm to us as we're sitting here talking about some stuff that can be pretty boring and dry sometimes. To, to see the results is really great. So welcome to both of you, and I will give the permission that we've given our students for the last several years. If you, you know, you're more than free to stay for the entire meeting and participate. If you've got a busy homework night, if you've got exams, you probably don't have exams yet. We're a little early, but as, you know, meetings go on later in the year and you've got exams, you know, please feel free to duck out after you give your reports if you need to attend to your studies. With that, I'll let you take it away and share the good news from the different buildings in the district. Thank you. in the district. Thank you.
Okay, so this is a report from Willow Avenue. "We are so happy to be back at school at Willow Avenue. Our PTO welcomed our students with music and balloons on the first day of school. Our students and teachers have been busy creating their classroom communities and learning what it means to be a good friend. Ms. Sawaki, our social worker, has been visiting the classrooms, talking about DASSA and teaching a lesson on our monthly character trait of patience. Ms. Buckholz is visiting all of our classes to talk about friendship and patience and our teaching, and teaching our Little Dragons ways to sprinkle kindness like confetti around Willow. We have also started our Willow Spotlight on our sensational 4th graders, highlighting a new 4th grader each week. We are very excited to welcome our families to Willow for Open House on the 10th. Families had the opportunity to visit their students' classrooms and meet their teachers. Our kindergartners are heading to Soon's Orchard at the end of the month to learn about apples and go apple picking. We will end the month with our first Friday morning opening, where we will recognize our principal's award winners for the month of September. We are off to a great start at Willow and are looking forward to a successful school year." Do you want them?
Yeah. Oh, we can?
This is the good news from the Cornwall Elementary School. "We are back in the swing of things here at Cornwall Elementary School. Our teachers and staff have been hard at work preparing our students for what will surely be another amazing school year. We held a faculty meeting on September 3rd to kick off the school year. Old and new staff members got to connect with a fun icebreaker trivia game, and we celebrated some big milestones for our staff. Our monitor Beverly Cannelli celebrated 25 years of service. Our 3rd grade teacher Doreen Gleason celebrated 30 years of service. And our PE teacher Jeff Moulton celebrated 25 years of service and receiving the New York State Volleyball Coach of the Year Award. Mr. Moulton also celebrated his 400th win as the varsity volleyball coach. The match went to a tie-breaking fifth set and Cornwall won 15-13. Congratulations, Coach Moulton, and go Dragons." During the second week of school, our kindergarten class hosted Color Days. Each day, their students were tasked with wearing a color that corresponded to the schedule, red on Monday, yellow on Tuesday, et cetera. This has been a week of enrichment for our new kindergarten students, and even our staff members joined in on the fun. Looking ahead, we are very excited for our third annual First Responders Day on October 8th, organized by our amazing PTO." And then this is for COH. "At COH, the school year has gone off to a great start. It began with the annual PTO Play Date held on Tuesday, September 3rd. Many students gathered in the back of the school and played with new and old friends. Students and staff had made a smooth transition back to school. This year's schedule has provided opportunities for classroom teachers to collaborate with special area teachers to plan enrichment in art, library, and music. Much like last year, every class has scheduled time with an ed, tech to support STEM, blended learning, and the New York State Digital Literacy Standards. Open House was held on Tuesday, September 10th. There was a tremendous turnout. Parents and guardians spent the evening listening to teachers explain their plans and expectations for their children during the school year. COH will hold its first Spirit Day on September 27th. We are hoping the classrooms and hallways are filled with students and staff wearing green and white. The first Friday morning opening assembly will take place for students and parents on September 27th, followed by the first PTO meeting. We are looking forward to welcoming parents back to help celebrate their children's successes." And now for the Cornwall Central Middle School. "We have had an amazing opening to our school year. Many thanks to our teachers and staff for all the work and preparation to welcome back our students. CCMS is abuzz with excitement and energy. Our very own teacher band, First Day Last Day, greeted students and parents on the first day, and students have already gotten back into the full swing of things. CCMS hosted their annual Dragon Camp this August. Incoming 5th graders got the opportunity to meet their teachers and classmates, drop up supplies, learn more about the building, play on our playground, start a collaborative art project, and take part in cooperative games. We finished the day off with pizza for lunch. It was an amazing morning. Many thanks to all of our teachers who helped. CCMS was so excited to open our doors to our parents for Open House. Parents in grades 5 through 8 had the opportunity to follow their child's schedule, meet with their teachers, and learn about all of the programs and activities their child will be able to participate in this year. Band, chorus, and orchestra families learned all about our music program. The building is abuzz with excitement about our new book vending machine, a generous donation from the PTO. The book vending machine is token-operated and chocked full of awesome selections for students to choose from. Students can be awarded a token for the vending machine by any CCMS staff member." And as for the high school, we unfortunately weren't able to meet with Mr. Dade beforehand to draft a report, but we can obviously give you an oral report. First thing we want to mention is the new schedule. The first day of school, it was clearly a rough start, a rough transition, especially during lunchtime. The cafeteria was sort of a madhouse with everyone rushing to grab chairs and seats. However, now I feel as though we've somewhat settled. People are finding different locations with their friends where they want to sit, and I don't feel like I have to run up the stairs at 10:16 in the morning every day anymore. Do you want to add anything?
Yeah, with the community lunch, we like got in the groove of having stuff in the gym, so a lot of people are doing that, and then we have clubs during that, so it opens up a lot of free time, and I really think that we're getting in the groove of the new schedule, and it's actually really helping students like get out of their like little own bubble and try and explore a little more throughout the high school.
I must admit, I wasn't, I did not think I was going to be a fan of the new schedule, but I do have a lot more free time than I normally would not have had if we had kept the old model. I've noticed other students as well have a lot more study halls and free time that can be used to go to clubs, to do homework, catch up on assignments, all of that stuff.
I agree, yeah.
Great, well, thank you both very much for that update, especially for the drop-rotation, the community lunch, obviously. It's a big change for the district and it's, there's been a lot of talk in the community, so hearing it from the boots on the ground, from the people that are living it, is really important. So thank you both for that. We look forward to seeing you, meeting throughout the rest of the year. Our next agenda item is the superintendent's update. Mr. Dade?
Thank you, Jim. I'll keep mine brief, I just have a highlight from our three As, so by way of academics, congratulations and shout-out to Andrew Wu, who is our CCHS National Merit Scholarship semifinalist. So he was, he and his parents were informed last week, but that's always a huge accomplishment. Joe DeBolt always sends the numbers, but it goes from something like 1.5 million, went down to 15,000, and it goes from there. So these are the cream of the crop by way of academics for our students, continued success. Wanted to reiterate the success of Coach Moulton, his 400th win, that's no small feat. Equally as impressive, I was able to watch Cornwall versus Washingtonville and see our very own Maddie score the only goal that, that game, so congratulations to our captain, one of our three captains on the team, but she showcased why she is a true leader and a great athlete during that win. That was not a, not an easy chill game, so congratulations to Maddie. And then by way of the arts, huge congratulation to Hunter Olson and Christian Green for being selected to the NISMAllstate Musicians, so they'll be attending the Allstate Music Festival in Rochester in December. That's all I have.
Wonderful, thank you, Terry. Next item on the agenda is the president's update. I will be brief as well. First, I would just like to, if you haven't seen the news, there was a car crash over the weekend in Minas Inc. Four students were involved, one student sadly passed away, and two other students, as I understand, are still in the hospital, so just wanted to share the Cornwall School District's thoughts and prayers with the Minas Inc. community. Certainly just an awful occurrence when a young person passes away like that, so. Moving on to business items, no way to make a good transition there, apologize. Strategic planning, we've received, how many RFPs back? Seven RFPs back. Christine and I are going to take a first cut at those. Terry said, based on his knowledge of the vendors, that, you know, there's a handful, but a few of those who will not meet our requirements are off the top, and we'll get them to a manageable number. We will share more information with the board there. Sort of a companion piece to that, easy for me to say, strategic planning document is the survey that we did in the spring. We are in touch with that vendor and looking to get some additional presentation from them to the board and get that scheduled. So that's my short president's update. Next item is new business, the consent agenda. "The consent agenda permits the Board of Education to make more effective use of its time by adopting a single motion to cover those relatively routine matters which are We will start by saying we've got eight items here. Would anybody like to pull items 2 through, any of the items 2 through 8?
Number 7, please.
Anybody else?
6.
7.
Okay, so then can I get a motion for items 1 through 3, number 5, and number 8?
Some moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, we will go in numerical order here. Number 4, can I get a motion?
Some moved.
Second. Richard, discussion?
Yeah, thank you, and nothing against this at all, just thank you for the donation. My question is, what differentiates, or how do we, how is it decided when the school districts fund something that is considered a need, and the PTO, whether they should fund it or not? And I just want to know kind of how that works, like, who decides who pays for what? If that makes sense.
Question, is this the PTO or the Student Government, SGO?
Student Government.
Student Government? So I guess it's more of a general question? Just in general? It depends on a few factors, the monetary amount, like if the board were to approve a new roof or some, or capital project, that would have to come through board approval. If it's something minor that we can remove between lines at the school-based level, then we take care of that by way of the traditional approval mechanisms. If it's a student request, the administration would look at it. If it's a teacher or staff request, it goes through a particular process at the school-based level. If it requires more funding, it would have to go from school base to central office. Okay.
I'm not sure if this is the appropriate time to bring it up, but it has to do with the picnic tables and the benches, and I thank you to our student government for donating that, but they need way more than what the 7,000 will purchase. Having gone to visit, they, there is not enough seating, so how would we go about adding to this so that there are an appropriate number of tables for the students to sit during that lunch period and not sitting on the floor?
So, I would ask that, you know, we take some time, we're in day 13 of the new schedule. As our two student reps stated, everyone's still trying to figure out how this works, the clubs that they're going to attend, what times they want to be in the gym versus in the cafeteria. The seniors have now staked their claim in the back of the cafeteria, so that took some days to figure out. When we went on our visit, I counted 30 empty cafeteria seats, so I think we need a little bit more time just to figure out exactly how many, how much more seating is needed. The auditorium, you could see that there was more seating available there. There were maybe 12 students, I think, in the whole 1,000-seat auditorium, same thing with the gymnasium, so we would need a little more time to really assess the need, because we also want to see how many students would actually sit outside.
Sorry, that, we went, it was a beautiful day, so my concern is when the weather is inclement and the cold weather approaches, there was not enough seating on that beautiful day with students outside, so how, you know, I'd like to help in any way we can so that the children aren't sitting on the floor.
Right.
Because the students I spoke to that day, many of them were saying they have to run to try to get a seat and then are afraid to get up to go to the bathroom, because when they come back from the bathroom-
Yeah, and we're not going to turn down the help from the board, I just wouldn't, I just would love to give it a little more time to really say like, how much is the request? Like, what are we hearing from students? Do we want the tables outside? There's only certain areas that we can put more seating inside by way of fire code regulations and things of that nature, so.
Right, maybe reconfiguring the auditorium would be helpful as well, because that was a lot of seating in there.
Right, right.
All right, thank you. So item number 4, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, thank you very much. Next item would be number 6, the 2025 trip to France. Can I get a motion, please?
Motion.
Motion, second. Bass, questions?
Thanks, Jim. Yeah, I pulled this item just like for everybody, for general knowledge about this program we have. I heard about it from my daughter, she's taking French class. My understanding is, this event is kind of looked at as the culmination of the French language class. Now, it's not mandatory, so my question is, my question is specifically, is it considered more like an exchange, students, where the students go live with families, or do they live with hotels? I hear about parents kind of being able to come along. How is that managed? I mean, the whole, like, generally, for somebody who doesn't know anything about it, like, in a nutshell, what is it?
So I can speak both from my job lens and from a parent lens. So, previous years, it was always a true exchange, so you would be suited up with your student from France, and let's say that this year, so, okay, so for example, my son is slotted to go this year. We probably will have somebody that he'll connect with this fall, that he will like make connections with and so on, and then he would go stay with their family come the spring, and then next school year, we would do the same for that family. The one year they didn't do that was after COVID, when my older son actually went, and they stayed in hotels because it was COVID regulations, we really couldn't guarantee that the housing would be available, and the last thing you want is for a student to travel all the way to France, or a student travel all the way to America, somebody get COVID, and then we couldn't host them anymore. So, Madame Mayo and Madame Clerkin, who now her new mate name is Minma, Minma, they had an informational session already at the end of last school year. They have a Google, Google class to join for parents, so if you're certainly interested, Bass, let me know, because I can make sure that you get that information. And I think they're going to have another meeting soon, because we're supposed to find out if in fact it's going to be a true exchange, or if it's going to be a hotel stay. I believe based on the meeting that they were setting up last spring, it's going to be a variation of both. So when they're in like the main hub of Paris and so on, I believe they're staying in hotels, but then when they go more to like Provence and so on, they'll be doing more of the exchange period. So I think this one's a little bit of a mixture. You're welcome.
Is that the same for all languages? I know a bit about the trip last year from Spanish, but is the vision that eventually, like, the other languages also have somewhat of a hybrid or somewhat of an exchange, or is that primarily French and then each language does it their own way?
Yeah, I think it's just the French trip, because Madame Mayo had a connection with a school over there. We actually don't really oversee this trip any longer, it's kind of an outside vendor that they do through the, through the school district in terms of, it's a school trip, so the board has to approve, the kids miss a couple of days for field trip prior to it. The Spain trip was a little different last year, they alternate years, so next year would be the Spain trip, then the France trip, and so on. My understanding is the Spain trip last year was open to any junior or senior that wanted to attend, they didn't necessarily need to be in the Spanish courses, whereas the French is primarily for the kids who are in the upper-level French classes.
Just kudos to the French program we have. I mean, my daughter can speak French, I can say, she can manage, so they're doing a good job.
And one additional question, these trips are 100% parent-funded?
They sure are. And to answer your question about being a parent-going, it's staff that's the chaperones, and I did try as a parent and a staff member, and my son told me no.
All right, thank you, everybody. Number 6, CCHS 2025 trip to France, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Wonderful. Moving on to number 7, CAA Side Letter of Agreement Resolution, can I have a motion, please?
Some of-
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion, Christian.
So I'm going to just be careful in my remarks because, you know, the content of this is in an attachment that is not public. So I'm going to just be abstaining on this, on this item. I did not find satisfactory, the side letter for, did not seem to be the right remedy for the situation there. And I'll just leave it at that, and I'll just be abstaining on this, on this agenda item.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Did I see a hand, Brendan?
Oh, no, I'm getting ready to vote.
Wonderful. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Abstentions? We have two abstentions, Christian and Tiffany, so that means that it is seven to zero to two on the official vote. Thank you, everybody, for the consent agenda. We have passed all items there. Moving on to the next item in our agenda, discussion on legal counsel and RFP. We have this listed as a discussion, I guess we, this is my fault, none of them reading, we should have perhaps drafted a resolution that we want to go with an RFP. Maybe we'll have to vote on that later, but I guess. What's that? Okay. So this came up at the last meeting, it came up last year. I think we have broad-based support to do an RFP for the legal counsel. So we, really, I think everybody here can keep a limited discussion, just for the public's information, the fact, last meeting, I, I said I wanted to get a fact check from Terry on something, I received that fact check, and that was, when is the last time that we've had an RFP for district legal counsel? That was in 2010. I think we can all agree that 14 years is too long to do an RFP for that role. So really, I, for me, the discussion is just kind of in general, and, you know, many of us on this board won't be on the board when this comes up again, but what do we think is an appropriate timeline for an RFP for legal counsel? I think we all probably agree we're there, so we don't need a lot of discussion and sending people there, and we can take a vote to authorize an RFP there when we have our discussion. But if anyone wants to chime in on just what they think an appropriate time interval is there, so we can keep that in mind moving forward, or any other, just general comments, please.
Jim, just, can I just, clarification? And just because I, I heard part, and I'm not sure I'm clear on what you said, so the time interval, is the time interval for an appointment of legal counsel or a time interval to?
To do an RFP for legal counsel.
Okay. Just clarifying, so it was my fault, I was unclear.
Yeah. No, I mean, I think 14 years is too long. What do we think is appropriate? You know, two years would be too short.
May I ask a quick question?
Please, yeah.
Can, can, for those of us who are new, can somebody explain the district's general process for an RFP? So if we say we want an RFP by November, hypothetically, I'm not saying that, then what's the return time? And then what's the implementation time?
So the actual process itself begins with us having to put the RFP together. With regards to legal services, it's pretty standard in terms of what they do. We would have to put a legal notice in the paper, and then based on this kind of a RFP, you probably need to give it about three weeks on the street. The RFPs come in, and then there would be some kind of a committee that would evaluate them, including in that evaluation would be interviews if need be. And then the board would award the winner that they selected.
So what's that timeline, you look like?
So three, four, again, it depends on the committee, how, you know, but I think, you know, from today, if you were to do, you know, start from today, you're probably looking at, you know, two months, eight weeks? Soonest.
But, yeah, I do think, so, you know, even the results that we got back from the other RFP, it's a matter of when the board can review them.
Right.
When they can meet, so that, you know, time flies, so that could be three weeks sometimes, just realistically, you know.
So just to follow up on Tiffany's question about it, do we, when we put out the, the RFP, do we have to be very specific about what we are looking for in terms of the nature of legal counsel? Or are we, are there any constraints upon, like, do we have to accept a lowest bid like we would for some other types of things that go out? Or what is, or what are the, I guess, the parameters that we operate under when, for legal counsel? Because obviously, that's what this is about.
So with regards to an RFP, we do have to go with the lowest bid. Best example I can give you, you could have a real estate attorney put in a bid for, you know, or cheap, but we, they don't have the knowledge or the information that we need. So the point is, the nature of an RFP, it's not a bid, you don't have to go with the lowest. An RFP is based on more than just cost. So that's why you have a committee to evaluate this as well as potentially interview.
There's different rules for professional services, so like architects, we went through an architecture RFP.
Right.
Three or four years ago, there's different rules that govern that process than govern the construction bids, where you have to go with the lowest, but it's not the lowest price, it's the lowest, what's the language, the lowest price of somebody.
Lowest qualified bidder.
Qualified bidder, right. Yeah. So it's, it's different rules that govern that, yeah. Bass, you had a question?
Thanks, yeah. I, I wanted to say, kind of, I mean, the questions that came are more or less what I wanted to say, but it seems to me there's a lack of process to do this. The fact that we're talking about it, like, we're asking Harvey, we were wondering, when was the last time we did it? The answer was 14 years ago. So it sounds more and more like a missing policy, maybe we sit down like very soon with Brendan and talk about policies to review. It seems to me that we have to define the process, the process would be, what's the frequency? Is it four years? Five? Is it two? I don't know. The timing, when would the RFP goes out? And what are the means of dissemination of that RFP? You mentioned like journals, is that enough to get a good pool? I mean, how best to really advertise this to get the best qualified bidders?
So one of the points that you're talking about is one of the more important ones, you want to make sure you have a good pool. When we send out the, when we prepare the RFP, we put a legal notice in, but with most of the RFPs that we do, we don't just sit back and wait for someone to read the legal notices because no one really does. So obviously, we, we give the RFP to our current attorneys, but we also send it out to all the other attorneys in the general area that we know work with the school districts around us.
I think that's a good point, though, Bass. So my question was really as to what should, do we think the frequency should be? I think that's a good point for the policy committee to take up. And Brendan, you're the chair this year?
Yep.
Yeah, so I'll task you with that, if you guys could just review what we have, because honestly, I haven't reviewed that policy. I'm, I'm sure that we do have some policy relating to that, but including a frequency in there, I think would be, would be an improvement. Any other comments, questions?
I have a, just an observation as we go into this process. And Harvey, you, you mentioned a, a committee to evaluate, I think that we should at least decide, are we doing this committee of a whole, committee board, what is that phrase? Committee? Yeah, committee of the whole, that's it. Or if we are, are selecting a committee and then we have to actually select it. And then I think we should just be clear as a board, what criteria are we using to evaluate? You know, I, I just think that still, there might be nine different opinions about what makes a, a good education lawyer and a good lawyer for the Cornwall Central School District. So I think we just be specific about how we are, what metrics we are, we are using, which would probably be the, the task of that committee. Certainly, I think we're, we're ready to start the process of drafting an RFP, but just have our mind on, to the point of the selection process, pretty quick. I mean, to have a, you know, new counsel in two months, kind of a blink of an eye. So we should be ahead of that and know what the evaluation process is going to be, so we can pick that up immediately once the bids start coming in.
I agree with what everyone has said, Harvey or whomever, when can you have the RFP prepared for our review? And Mr. President, when can we have a committee seated?
Yeah, so I, I just jotted myself a couple notes, sort of dovetailing on Brendan's point. You know, we can get this done in eight weeks, I don't see any pressing need to have this done in eight weeks, I think it's more important to take our time and do it right. And when you're dealing with a board of nine people, that takes longer more often than not. But I, you know, I think certainly authorizing to kick off the process, once Harvey prepares the first draft, I think the entire board should look at it and make comments, questions on that. As far as a committee to review, I guess we'll have to, maybe we'll just, we'll, we'll go by email, people can virtually raise their hand via email, and we'll see what kind of interest we get there and go from there. I know when we did, I came in, when I came on the board was the tail end of doing RFPs for both internal and external auditors on the audit committee, and we had a criteria check down of, you know, sort of a scorecard of how we're going to do that. I would imagine we could, we could find something like that from other districts or, you know, for legal representation for school districts, every school district in New York has legal representation, so we don't have to reinvent the wheel. So we could find, you know, some criteria to start with and then tailor that for our district. Christian?
So just combining some points I made before and kind of building on what, what I was asking the question with is, so I agree with Brendan about, you know, having some criteria. And the question is whether we need those criteria going into the RFP, because when we talk about the qualified bid, it's the basket of legal services that we are looking for, and not just someone who has an education law practice versus a real estate law practice. And so my question is that, is that part of the discussion tonight, so that we have a clear idea? I know that obviously nine people here, I think people are on a spectrum of, some people have certain ideas about what we think we need in addition to what we have. I think some people are happy with their current legal services and not speaking, just speaking in general terms. And is that, should that be part of the discussion tonight to inform the drafting of the RFP that goes out so that whoever's bidding on it understands what the board corporatively, as a corporate body desires in terms of that basket of services?
Yeah, if you have some specific criteria that you would like, please feel free to share them right now. I personally haven't done that level of homework to, to, to dig into that. But if you have a specific criteria point, please share it, you know, with, via email.
Is it in this discussion, or do you just want to collect people's, like, wish list, and we can then, in a sense, put that together? I mean, what is the proper process? I don't know what in terms of, like, this has to be a public discussion?
Okay.
Or this has to be something where we're just gathering information from?
I, I think that this discussion would be quite lengthy.
Yeah.
And I think perhaps the best thing to do is, if I put together the RFP, use that as your starting point. And then have the committee flesh out all the details, and they can change whatever they want in there.
So that, I was trying to be clarified, because like, as, on this, on the agenda, is this a wide-ranging discussion, or is this a discussion simply to go and decide whether we want to move forward or not?
Right.
I think the main purpose was to decide if we want to move forward or not, and not so much to dig into the, the nuts and bolts of how we're going to evaluate.
Yeah. We take the vote right now, and as, as, no, the vote, do we want to go, do we want to go with that or not? And then with Harvey just said, Harvey's copy is going to be the baseline upon which we suggest any changes. We might say, great, two thumbs up, nothing to.
Not a working meeting.
Yeah. Any other comments, questions? Okay. So I guess we'll take, we'll just take a vote of, do we want to authorize an RFP for legal services for the district? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, this is a graduated to that level? Okay.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So that's nine to nothing, so we will have Harvey, we'll draft an RFP, we will disseminate that to the entire board. And then if everybody can, if you have interest in being on a, you know, a temporary committee to review those submissions, please email me, and we will form a committee to do that. Also, if you have, you know, specific criteria that you think would be useful as part of the rubric for evaluation, please also email that, and we'll compile all of that.
Jim, do you want to put a, a drop dead date on when to get that?
When to get the RFP?
No, when to get the email stuff in?
I would say, you know, by, let's pull up a date here.
I think people want to say, do we wait for Harvey to get the draft and then?
As far as the specific criteria, I don't think we need to put a date on that by, for that. As far as forming the committee, let's just say 10-1, which is a week from tomorrow, just because it's a nice round date.
Can we discuss if we're going to do a subcommittee or if we're going to do a committee of whole?
I think we should do a subcommittee.
I, I don't see why we need that. It's like we submit our suggestion by email individually.
Well, I think the difference is.
There's no quorum in that.
Where will we deliberate? Then you're, you're basically saying that it's going to be a lengthy agenda item at our next meeting if we do a committee of the whole, whereas a committee would meet, have those discussions of, let's say you, I don't, I don't know what's a realistic number for how many you get, but let's say you get a dozen responses. We could sit here as a board and go through a dozen responses, or the committee can narrow it down to five, you know? With it, with the other seven still being available to the rest of the board, obviously, but it's just a way of winnowing the conversation. But I'm not taking a stance, but I think that's the choice.
Let's say there is a suggestion that somebody believes very strongly about, like, got to be there, and that committee, you're kind of picturing, like, five people doesn't, doesn't think, like, that's important to have. I mean, now, okay, you've just entered into a conversation, keep it, no, yes. So I would see kind of like forming a committee of five or four, whatever the number, to speak for the nine.
It, it's to recommend to the nine, it's the same as any other committee. I mean, the reason we have committees is just to, you know, so we don't have more three-hour board meetings than we already have, because some things just need a little more time and a little more work, so that can be done at the committee level. And then the committee always makes a recommendation to the full board, the committee never takes action that binds the board. So I think this is just for some of that work, and that's not to say if somebody is not on the committee that they're, are not able to submit criteria to be part of the evaluation, you know, guide. Certainly, the input of noncommittee members is welcome in terms of what they're looking for.
Sure, I agree.
Richard?
Just maybe a suggestion, we see who is interested in joining this subcommittee. I mean, if three or four people are interested, then we're good. If all nine people are interested, then maybe that's a sign that we have to go to a whole committee sort of format, but.
If nine hands are raised, then we'll have to think about that, yes. Agreed.
Suggestion.
Agreed.
Can I?
I'm sorry.
May I clarify the process, just because I, I got a little confused? Harvey's going to draft the RFP, going to share it with the whole, the whole board. We will individually react to that RFP, either raising a, you know, hey, can we add this, or what does this mean? And then that, those, that list of final things will either go to a committee or, or the board at whole, whether they go into the RFP revision. Is that the process?
I think the final, the, the board will review the RFP, submit any questions, comments. I think the board as a whole will look at the RFP, and then we'll form a committee to evaluate the responses.
And then that will be recommended back to the board, voted on, and har, or discussed?
Yes. And to Brendan's point, the committee doesn't have to say, hey, we should pick this one, it can go, you know, hey, we got 12 responses, here are the top three, let's discuss the top three.
Okay. I just wanted to, thank you.
So my point, I, I kind of favor having committee of the whole, just because knowing through conversations over the last year and a half about the range of opinions, and I just think of the committee as a whole would be better, because I think that there are shades of differences on, I mean, people share some concerns, and then people have differences. And I think the point is, the best way to build consensus and to be representative would have, as, as many of us, meaning all nine of us at committee as a whole, that everyone can attend, or just like any committee meeting, if people don't attend, be, you know, as many as possible. I just think that would expedite the process, and I think would help us build toward consensus. So I'm just registering my preference for that, for that pathway.
Fair. Let's see, let me see via email how many hands get raised, and we can consider that. And let me, to be honest with you, I haven't been part of anything that's been a committee of the whole, and what are the rules for that when you get into public meetings? And it's just a board meeting, yeah. Okay. So let's see how many hands are raised, and we may circle back to that. So we've already taken a vote on that. I think we've exhausted the discussion for this evening, more to come. Next item on the agenda is public comments. O for two, O for two. And then the final agenda item is the closing comments from our board members. I'll start left with Bass, and we'll work our way around Bass.
I, I, no, I can't come up with anything right now, I'm sorry. I can wait to get more ideas from, maybe?
There we go. Thank you. Tiffany?
Thanking Ava and Maddie, especially since you.
Uh, thanking Ava and Maddie, especially since you stayed for the whole meeting. I appreciate you giving your time. It's wonderful to hear from students, so thank you so much. Also from board members, thank you so much, and administration for working so well together and really hearing each other and, and taking what everyone has to say and actually acting upon some things that we can act upon. I think it's nice and I think it shows that we can work as a cohesive unit.
Thank you. Christian?
Um, so I'd like to share welcome to the board. And as I said last year, I encourage you to use your voice, because I think you're the most important voices sitting around this table. And to, not to speak for yourselves, but to speak for, and not just yourselves as high school students, but yourselves, the entire experience going through all the different schools and what you see and what you think is missing, I think is important for us, because it brings our eyes to it and our attention to it. But I wanted to spend some time just talking about, continuation of what I talked about in August, which is substitute teachers. So the rate for an uncertified substitute teacher is $107 a day. And by numbers provided to us, what's expected, that works out to be $15.10 an hour. And this was described as well above minimum wage. The, on the beholder, I'll let people judge for themselves what that is. But I was just, last meeting, I hired, I hired the first babysitter, because my wife was out of town and I needed, for the board meeting, I hired a babysitter. And it was significantly above $15 an hour, and that was a CCHS student. And I looked up what is the rate for babysitters in the Hudson Valley, and it's between $20 and $30 an hour. And why, why does that matter? And, you know, I did some other, just, you know, because like us, everyone sets higher substitutes and you can easily find what different districts in the 50-mile radius of Cornwall are paying for their substitutes. And we are, we are on the lower end of the tail. We're not the lowest, but we are definitely on the lower end. And this is why I think it matters. Economists would say there's something called inefficiency wage, which is different than a market wage. A market wage is what you can, the market will bear, and you look at your competition and you try to get the lowest best price. But the efficiency wage, which one of the people developing was this obscure female economist named Janet Yellen, back in the 1980s. And the idea is that efficiency wage is because there are more costs to employment than just what you are paying them. There's a cost in terms of turnover in hiring and trading, improvement of skills, the amount of discretionary effort. And so the idea is that, you know, you pay above the market wage, because what you do is you actually get a better return in terms of value. Because when you do that, it basically, and, and just on this point, one of the biggest deficits during the pandemic that kept a lot of school districts closed was the inability to have adequate numbers of substitute teachers. And it's not surprising, if you know generally what the pool of substitute teachers is, which is prospective teachers who are looking to enter the profession, retired teachers who haven't decided that they're done yet, and, you know, parents in the, in the community. And what happened is that, you know, some of those populations kind of have dried up and, you know, trouble finding substitute, I think, is a general problem. And I think that we should look at this, because this is something where it has value to the district above and beyond just, in a sense, minding the classroom for a particular day. Because, you know, when it's a prospective teacher, they have an exposure to the district. We get to take a look on them at the extended job interview. And it helps us, you know, hire and also potentially attract more diverse people to our staff in the district. And I think that's one, you know, just one small advantage for happening and drawing them there. And I talked about my own experience 20 years ago as a substitute, over 20 years ago as a substitute teacher. And the rate of compensation in Cornwall is within $5 of what I was paid 20 years ago in upstate New York, where the first step, first column in that district at the time was $29,100. And there isn't a school district in this area that's even very close to that, and that just shows that substitute pay hasn't gone up. And there was a report that just was issued in the last week, that the gap between teachers and people with equivalent education, and we might discuss what is equivalent and degrees and things of that sort, but that gap has actually grown since 2020, which indicates that there's a losing of ground, whether you think, like, whatever the metric is, the metric has gone in kind of the opposite direction. Another way of thinking about this is, you take a first, first-year marketing class, you learn about the marketing mix and the four Ps. And one of those is price, and I teach about this, because it's the hardest thing for my students to understand, because you hear price, you think it's just a cost. But price is part of marketing, because it sends a message about value. And that's probably more important than what the cost is. And I'll just summarize, because you don't have to be an economist or a marketing, a marketer to understand these things, because the film director David Lean, who brought us Lawrence of Arabia and Bridge on the River Kwai, had a small little movie called Hobson's Choice that came out in the 1950s. And it's about an employer who thinks he's saving money, and he basically takes his best employee and pays him the market wage, happens to be his son-in-law. And the ending of the story, of course, is that his son-in-law leaves, goes across the street, goes to work for his competitor, and puts his father-in-law out of business. And I think that just is a, we should kind of revisit this, because you're not trying to be the one who gives the most, the highest substitute pay, that's not the goal. But when you're below average for the region, maybe we need to look at this, because I think we will benefit by looking at that policy going forward in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Christian. Carl?
Hi, how are you doing? I just wanted to thank the two girls that came in, you did a great job. Okay? Keep it up. And I just got a couple things I wanted to bring up tonight. First of all, was what Eleanor brought up about the benches that we talked about, and we kind of put off benches for the, for what's going, what we need now. So that's something I think we should, we should look into a little bit quicker. We do ask other people to go out and buy them, so maybe it's time for us to. We've been up at the school and it's been nothing but a mess up there. I'm being honest, it's a mess. Okay? I've seen kids walking in the hallways eating, I've seen them in bathrooms eating, I've seen kids that were sitting outside, sitting, you know, all over. We're not going to, I'm not going to get into that tonight, but we will follow that up in the future, very quickly if we could. In fact, I wouldn't mind making a, making a, you know, vote right now on it. But that being said, I'm gonna, we'll wait till the next meeting. All right? The last thing I wanted to bring up, and this is the one that's gonna hit a lot of people that don't like it, politics in our school. When we do politics, we do it for everyone. Okay? We don't just put up one specific person who's running for president, okay, and allow other children to get hit because they weren't involved with, you know, being someone that watches, likes Harris, or whoever the president might be. However you want to go about it, I don't really care. I see what's happening, I've gotten calls from parents, I've gotten calls from kids. We want, we work on one particular person that's running. Look into that some more, please. It's, it's really, it's really bad. I mean, my phone hasn't stopped ringing over all of this stuff. I say that's not our job. Our job is to give both, okay? And then the kids decide down the road. We don't hammer one thing on them. This is the stuff we got to start doing. Other than that, I hope everybody has a great week and enjoy yourself.
Thank you. Brendan?
Thanks, Jim. Be quick, Maddie, Ava, welcome, great job. Always great to hear, you know, what's really going on in the schools, not just, you know, what the, you know, what, what your experience has been, I should say, in the schools, and not just the, the prepared comments. So we appreciate that and certainly feel free to offer those whenever you can. Other than that, really nothing else to say. I think Tiffany mentioned it was a, a good meeting, a good discussion. I ditto that and I hope we have more of those in the future. This is how it should run, so, good night.
Thank you. You owe Matt Bannon his royalty for using the word ditto. Eleanor?
Sorry, I thought Richard was calling. I would like to welcome Madeline and Ava. You girls did a great job tonight. I'd love to pick your brains at some point and see how it worked for you and what, what you enjoyed and what you didn't, so maybe sometime we can get together. I'd like to say that what Christian said is true. Having been in the schools, very difficult to get a substitute teacher, and when they pull your TA to go into another classroom, it's very frustrating. So we could probably alleviate some of that. When you're driving down 32 and you see that Starbucks is hiring for $22 an hour and you tally what the subs are making, I, I have to agree with him. Other than that, I'd like to congratulate all of our teachers and students for having a wonderful September and a great start to the school year. That's about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Richard?
Thank you. So I want to first welcome Madeline and Ava. Thank you for being here. Thank you for staying for the entire meeting. I really appreciate that. I think it's a great benefit. And I think you too should feel welcome to speak up whenever you feel the need to. If you have a question or a comment, I'm sure everybody here would love to, to hear it throughout the meetings this year. So, thank you. So I'll just briefly, I'm not going to mention the, too much about the drop schedule visit, because we have a report that we'll be putting forward to the next meeting. I did ask the question on the funding, simply to figure out how we can help or solve the issues that have been mentioned. And the Board of Ed has the authority to do it, so just wanted to kind of throw it out there and allow people to think about that. This past week, I was invited to attend the CES Playground Committee meeting, group of parents and the PTO. They are looking to fundraise to purchase some ADA-approved playground equipment for here at CES. I was happy to be there and hear what people's ideas were, so I just wanted to let you guys know and let the community know that's what they're doing. And they actually would like to see some, maybe guest board members just stop in and see what they're up to. And lastly, the RFP, I think it's a, this is a good thing, as I think everyone here has said. It shows that we're being, you know, fiscally responsible, we're doing our due diligence and, you know, holding ourselves and everybody accountable. With that, I hope everybody has a good night. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Christine?
Thanks. So, welcome, thank you. I really appreciated your genuine off-the-cuff commentary on your experience so far, so thank you for sharing that. And I don't want to say being brave, but like, that was different than the norm, so thank you for that. That was really great. I think along those lines, when we're, when, I did not go on the visit, but when we hear things like, it's a mess up there, I think we have to be careful, like, how are we defining success to begin with? And then are we asking students, you know, like, maybe they want to eat in the hallway? I don't know. I'm not saying they do or don't, but I think as like adults sitting around, you know, talking about it, we have to take a step back and, and define what it is that we're really trying to go towards and then talk with those being impacted, which I'm sure is happening, but I just wanted to raise that. I can't help it, I, I really wasn't going to talk long, I promised my, my friends out here, but I have to piggyback on Christian's comment around the economists and everything else with regards to wage for commitment and effort. There, that is an element, of course, when I, the work I do, salary is always an element, but there's also a lot to be said for the culture, people feeling valued, people feeling like they make a difference and they matter. And so it's really the heart and the mind, it's those two things together. And I think Cornwall does a good job at that. There's always room for improvement, but I don't want us to, to sit, to think that only wages are going to make the difference. I'm not debating whether or not we have a fair wage, that's not my, my position, but I just want us, you know, we're, this is a big year for us and we have to think about there's more than just that element, that there's a couple things that go into it. So thank you for letting me do that. Have a great week.
Thank you. I, I will cover a little bit of new ground. I, I'm going to ask a question in my closing comment. Can you tell me about the book vending machine?
Yeah.
I saw this. Can you explain that to me?
Can I get a token?
Yes. So at, at the middle school, Ms. Palumbo, over the summer, connected with some educators from other areas, and the book vending machine is a, a positive reinforcement that is unlike most positive reinforcement systems that you see around the country. A lot deal with food and stickers and things of that nature. This was really focused on helping to develop a, a love of reading and things of that nature at the middle school level. So we got to see the ribbon-cutting, teachers and staff selected, I believe there were eight with, with us that morning. Any staff member can award a token to a student and they can literally just go up, like you would purchase a pack of M&Ms from a vending machine, they can look at what all the titles are and select their book for doing a great job at something at the middle school. So it was just, it was, it warmed the heart to see that kind of venture undertaken. It was a collaboration between the PTO at CCMS, Ms. Palumbo making it happen for, for this year.
Cool. I like that. Yeah, that was the, the payment mechanism was, was a little unclear to me, so they get a token for a good bit, yeah. So if this has success, certainly something we should look at rolling out to our elementary schools, because obviously it'd be great for them as well. That's a cool idea. And I'll stay, I guess I'll be middle school-centric here in my comments. I will just applaud Kate Palumbo and her staff for the new cell phone policy rolling out. A couple of years ago, I was the one on the end of an eight-to-one vote to ban schools in our district, district-wide.
Phones.
Phones?
To ban phones. You said ban schools.
Ban schools. Schools are banned. That's where we're at at the end of the meeting. Thank you. To ban phones in our schools. You know, I spoke, I, I've spoken previously about that. I think the data is clear that cell phones are, can't, if there's any influence, it's a negative influence and there's no real evidence out there that it's a positive influence on the school environment. So happy to see new steps being taken at the middle school to enforce existing policy. It's not a change in policy, but just a new enforcement mechanism for existing policy. So I saw that memo and I got a smile out of that. So with that, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved. Second, all in favor?